I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska governing body, the City of Seward, by the Nebraska Leagues Act conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Leagues Act is displayed on north wall of this minimum facility as required. Disclosure of being recording process is posted in meeting room. Dispense sign sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Presenters shall approach the podium to determine the address for the clerk's record. The asked remarks in five minutes. All remarks should be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward deserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Melvin, back here. Cameron, Chris, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, and.
The first item this evening is consideration of approval of draft minutes of January 16th, 2018.
Remove.
The motion is second. Is there any discussion? Sing now, be registered, both. Please pay the votes.
In favor, welcome back, Captain Fitzpatrick, and Mr. Singleton Schmidt. Motion.
Next we have consent agenda.
Move your proof.
Right.
We have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Sing now, be registered, both. Please pay the votes.
In favor, welcome back, Captain Fitzpatrick, and Mr. Singleton Schmidt. Motion.
Next we have a public hearing. This is the one and six-year street improvement plan. I believe J E O, Julie Welcome, is here to discuss this.
Good evening. We've got the slides for you as we have done in past years, just to do a quick refresher for you. This one and six-year plan is a requirement as part of the highway allocation funding that you do receive on a monthly basis from the Nebraska Department of Transportation. That's still hard for me to say. It's been roads forever. And here are the basic requirements of how we work through the one and six-year plan requirements. It's been this way for two or three years, so those of you who have heard me say this before, this is pretty much the same. I leave it in here on an annual basis because this does get posted on the city's website and that way the public knows what the reasons that the city is doing, what they're doing. So where we start is we summarize what was completed in the year 2017. There were no official projects completed in 2017. We had planned on doing what we're calling the first phase of Seward Street that the city, um, street department was going to construct themselves, however, due to some turnover in staff and a few other re-prioritizations. That was not built, so it stayed in the one-year plan. It is planned to be done this summer. I don't know if Mel knows exactly when yet, but he has enough staff to construct that with city forces this year. And then we are carrying over three projects from last year's one-year plan that are still in the engineering design process. The Carroll K Boulevard and the Seward Hike Bike Trail are federal. We funded projects, so we're working through the environmental process and then Waverly Road is in the initial stages of designing and getting that concept so that it can coordinate with the Seward Hike Bike Trail. So now starting to kind of review the one-year projects. Carroll K Boulevard is where we're going to start. It, as I mentioned, is a federally aid project, so eighty percent of the funding will come from the federal government. It's about three tenths of a mile long and it will extend Carroll K from where it ends now to East Hillcrest Drive. Right now, the project is estimated to cost around eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of federal funds. The city shares around a hundred and ninety thousand. We are nearly complete with the environmental process on this and as soon as the environmental process is done, we'll submit the final plans. There is some property that needs to be acquired on this project now due to FHWA's determination that the the property is all considered park and need to minimize the impact of the park. But this should be let here in this 2018 calendar year, which means it'll be under construction next summer. So there is a light at the end of that project tunnel. On Waverly Road, as I mentioned before, it's in the concept design stage, so we can coordinate with the trail that will be running parallel to it. Just to kind of let everybody know, we are planning on using brand-new concrete paving from Highway 15 to the Plum Creek Bridge. The the funding source for this is a number of years ago, the cities and counties worked with the state to create a repurchase program where instead of having the federal funds that are that are being used for Carroll K available, I believe you get eighty-five or ninety cents on the dollar of the full federal funds and you can build it yourself. The benefit of that, less paperwork, projects can get done a lot faster. For those of you who've been around this whole time in Carroll K, you understand that. And you should be able, and then that money goes straight into the city's budget per se. That is something, you should have been getting some of those funds here for the past year, I believe. So this is going to be an engineering for this current fiscal year. Right now, we're going to be coordinating with Seward County on when they're looking to do their stretch, but we're estimating having this under construction maybe in nineteen or twenty right now. Obviously, that's going to be highly dependent upon having available funds from the city. Seward Hike Bike Trail is the other federal aid project. This will complete the loop around the city. You did again receive federal aid for this in the share of, it's about a four million dollar project. So, you know, two point eight is the currently estimated construction cost. The city share is eight hundred thousand dollars. Right now, from talking to Shimmer Associates, who is your design engineer for this, they're hoping to have this led in 2019 and then construction following in 2020. So that, it may be something where the trail and potentially Waverly Road may be under construction at the same time. We'd have to work out those keys with the two projects and see how that could be phased to make it work. And just so everybody remembers, this is the current route that is proposed for the trail. The last two one-year projects are local projects. This is Seward Street, the first segment or first phase where we're going to take the current concrete section with curb and gutters and start extending that further to the east. The first phase will get to the driveway of the trailhead parking lot. As mentioned before, it will be built by city forces and it's estimated to cost around fifty thousand dollars.
Go back one.
Yep.
So that's going to be this summer? This is going to start on the East Seward Street?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and that's right away when the frost comes out or? So we can start telling the people up there?
Try early spring, kind of. Sometime early spring, I like to get started on as soon as we can as weather.
And is this going to the church or the city limits stop? Or is the county going to work with us and go all the way around, you know?
Um, well, we've got three different phases that go, I mean, I think we're wrapping all the way around too and I'm going to rank on the.
To the city limits.
To the city limits.
The church.
And, yeah, so we're hoping over a number two to three years to get all the way.
Okay, I assume it's one of the very far.
Yep. And then, yeah, I mean, we'll need to, I guess I'd recommend we visit with the neighborhood. I don't know how, I'd have to look at the routes again, but it might be advisable, if it works with Mel's schedule, we may want to wait till school's out, just so it's easier for people to get into town for school, dropping school kids off.
How long did it take?
Oh, I don't know, maybe a month's time or so, we've done it. Several, it's been a while, but we've done it before.
Yeah.
You know, it's kind of, it takes a little time, but, uh, you know, part of it, we might close off or we'll just just construct one lane at a time. We still have traffic, you know, we can do that. It can work there.
Yeah, I was going to say, you've got some decent shoulder to wear. You potentially could have some rock on that.
Yeah. Install some, you know, add rocks to use it as a road bed.
Now you're going thirty-two feet?
Yeah, it'll be, I think, aren't we going the same width as it is?
Thirty-two feet for a while and then, guys, when we go up around the curve, S-curve, then we got the ditches. I think we're about in there, a little bit, and then, and then let you go straight up the hill to the, you know, pass the church and that way we have the ditch. And there, there too, it's only sixty-six foot right away, so kind of like a county road. We'll probably, we'll use the ditch as drainage, so we'll probably have a thirty-foot wide, maybe thirty-one along there. Because you've got to get that slope, you know, for the ditch and everything, that thirty-one slope, so. But the initial start, we'll get to that thirty-two. That is where it is now.
All right. Um, the next, um, two slides are the proposed asphalt overlays for this year. The first being Jackson Road, right here north of municipal building going from Fifth to Eighth Street. The thirty-five thousand dollar construction cost shown is based on a contractor quote, so Mel and I feel pretty good about that number. This was one that was advanced from last year's, um, one of the six-year plan as part of the one and six-year plan, but it was the first priority from last year. And because of the the nice price you're getting there on that street, Mel was going to visit with the contractor to see if we could also get some overlays completed on South Street from Fifth to Seventh and then one block of Fifth Street from South to Ash. Based on the total length and prorating what they quoted for Jackson Street, we're looking at that one being around sixty thousand dollars.
So we're going over concrete with asphalt?
Mm-hmm.
Right here?
Right here.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's just, we patched some here this last summer, some really, really bad spots. And it's just rough and then like by the libraries, out the libraries, just rough over, over concrete. It's a good, it's still a good base, you know, nothing settled, but just some little spots. We got some little minor repairs. We mill that off, put that two-inch overlay, we're going to have a nice smooth road. It's going to be a lot better.
And it'll help seal up that concrete.
My question will be then, we're going to do asphalt versus concrete. We're not going to let a contractor drive that sheet splitter around town anymore over asphalt. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
No. Yeah, that isn't dead set well with me either.
Okay, just wanted to know if you want to do the asphalt.
All right, so now we're moving into the projects that are in our, are in our six-year plan and these are listed on the next three to four slides. I don't remember exactly how many I have, in the order of priorities. So the top of our six-year plan would be East Hillcrest Drive from East Ridge Drive down to the bridge over Plum Creek. This, right now, is planned for a local funding project. Depending on the final cost on Waverly Road, this may be another one that we want to look at using some of those federal aid repurpose. It's a long name, but the federal, the, in lieu of federal aid money, maybe is the easiest way to put it. This would be concrete paving with a curb, so it would match the section on the balance of East Hillcrest Drive. And it would also include a sidewalk or mini-trail, depending on how wide we want to go from the Concordia Campus down to the Plum Creek Trail, so they have an actual place to walk rather than the shoulder or the driving lanes. I've even seen some of those kids do it. Next on the priority list would, is also East Hillcrest Drive, so it'd be from East Ridge all the way back to Highway 15. This would be a asphalt overlay project to help preserve the existing condition of East Hillcrest. There's likely going to be some patching needed on that roadway as well. But that, that would be the next priority. Then you see the next two phases of Seward Street. One of, you know, obviously these may jump because they're smaller projects that can be constructed by city forces, taking from the trailhead parking where we're stopping in the one-year plan project. We're looking at breaking it up and going through Run Ridge, Ridge Run Drive, I always want to say Run Ridge, I don't know why. Ridge Run Drive. But depending on what Mel finds with his first phase and total costs, we may try to take take it all the way to Evergreen in the next phase, depending on budget and total costs. So that way we can get that good chunk of that roadway done in the next couple of years. And then our final segment of Seward Street would take it from Evergreen out to the city limits and that's what Mel had described earlier was where the section that would not have the curb, whereas the other sections likely would, just because it would match better with the area and we could utilize the existing ditches for drainage. The next group of three projects are shown for Pine Street. That would be paving of gravel roadways in the southern part of the community, as well as Spruce Street. Yep, there's only one block of Spruce Street here. That's all in the same neighborhood, so depending on whether those streets are taken on by city forces for construction or whether it makes sense to bundle them up as potentially part of a street improvement district with some potential assessments there to be done by a contractor is, is something that we're still looking at, but there is a need for some of those projects there. The last group of projects include resurfacing of Columbia Avenue, paging of Walnut Street, again down in that progressive road Pine Street area, and then Park Avenue. This is our one-block stretch of Park Avenue that is really a one-lane roadway. Mel and I have been talking about this project for a number of years and the best way to handle it and still be able to construct it and meet minimum design standards. Because obviously there's no way in hairy heck we can get that to be a full with two-lane street. So, you know, a couple of the things that we've been discussing that when we're ready to move this project forward, that we bring to council to discuss is looking at making it a one-way street, because then you only have to build the width that we've got now. Or perhaps looking at designating it as an alley instead of a street, then your design standards are reduced. The one negative on that, now this is only one block, so it's not a huge negative, is once it's an alley, it comes off of your lane miles. And lane miles is one of the factors in how much high reallocation money you get. But I don't know that it would be a huge ding to lose one block to eliminate, to reduce maintenance that is currently going on to this, this segment of gravel road. But that would be another one that Mel was looking at to be constructed by city forces, whatever we do going forward. Then we've got East Ridge Drive from Bradford to Roberts. This is a potential gap paving district that we could do to get that project paved. So that is the end of all of our projects. Does anybody, I ran through those six-year projects pretty quick. Anybody have any questions on those? There weren't a lot of changes to those from last year's plan, so that makes it pretty simple. Kind of what we'll review as we do every year is we also do prepare GIS maps that will go on the city website that show all of the city street projects as well as we use, and I realize you can't see this very well on the screen, but this is a map of the two-mile radius around city of Seward, although the bottom gets cut off a little bit, but the county doesn't have any projects down that, down south. Showing both the city and county projects based on the information we have. So this kind of helps the city plan for what the county's doing and so we know when we need to coordinate with the county and where the county knows when they need to potentially coordinate with the city. So that's, that's everything and then there's the key and it provides the year on when the county thinks they're going to potentially get those projects done. So that's all I have for questions, but I'm going to, there are these more zoomed-in maps on the city, so you can see the projects as well, so we can always pull those up if we need them for questions.
Any questions?
All right, thank you very much.
This is a public hearing, so I'd love us to do a public comment. On this item, anyone from the public that's to comment on item number five, please come to the podium at this time. Seeing no one, then I will close the public portion of public hearing. Julie, any else, Mel or Julie?
No, I think that's it. If you have no questions, I think we're good.
But then, unless the council has any questions or comments, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
On your.
Resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number 2018 dash zero one. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
In favor, welcome back, Captain Fitzpatrick, and Mr. Singleton Schmidt. Motion.
Thank you.
Thanks, Council.
Thank you.
Next, item number six, consideration of a special dedicated liquor permit for Kwanzaa Club of Seward, Nebraska, the Seward Alcohol at the Seward Act Pavilion. This is for a March twenty-sixth, I'm sorry, March nineteenth event with a March twenty-sixth alternative date.
This is an annual event that they've been doing for two, three or more years now. They just had to come before us as they are a nonprofit. Got any concerns?
Any questions or comments or concerns from the council?
Move your proof.
Right. We have a motion. The second is ready for discussion. Seeing none, be registered your votes. Please play the votes.
In favor, welcome back, Captain Fitzpatrick, and Mr. Singleton Schmidt. Motion.
Item number seven, consideration for recommendation to the Nebraska Control Commission approving Claudia L. Horton as manager of retail class C liquor license for veterans of war, form wars post four-seven-five-five.
I received the application from the commission, changing, or requesting the change of manager. Police Chief Baldwin did his report, doesn't have any concerns with it, and it's a city.
We approve. We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion in a second. Give her a discussion. Seeing none, be registered your votes. Please play the votes.
In favor, welcome back, Captain Fitzpatrick, and Mr. Singleton Schmidt. Motion.
Okay, thank you. Item number eight, consideration of an ordinance authorizing the sale of Lot Six Reynolds addition to Ben F. and Carolyn B. Hughes. Great.
Uh, yes, we were given an offer by Ben and Carolyn Hughes for the cemetery lot, what we refer to as Cemetery Lot Six. It's in the amount of forty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. That went to the cemetery board. They recommended approval and then forwarded for your consideration. No.
Any questions or comments from the council? Yes, no?
Introduce the ordinance.
An ordinance to direct the conveyance of real property to Ben F. Hughes and Carolyn E. Hughes to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form to provide for a time this ordinance shall take effect. For we're going to take a transaction, you have to have three readings. Is that correct? Or no? We don't, we continue with this? Okay. The ordinance has been read by title and designated as ordinance number 2018 dash zero six and the title is hereby approved. They have a motion to dispense with the statutory rule.
Come on.
Sorry. We have a motion in a second. There's a conclusion discussion. Seeing none, be registered your votes. Please play the votes.
In favor, welcome back, Captain Fitzpatrick, and Mr. Singleton Schmidt. Motion.
Again, this is ordinance number 2018 dash zero six. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
Remove.
Second.
We have a motion in a second and make for a discussion. Seeing none, the question is, the ordinance number 2018 dash zero six be finally passed and adopted. Be registered your votes. Please play the votes.
In favor, welcome back, Captain Fitzpatrick, and Mr. Singleton Schmidt. Motion.
Thank you. Item number nine, presentation acceptance of library annual report. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Karen Lawyer.
If you have a speed decision.
Can I blank this? No.
Yes.
Our chocolate cherries, you can put in a coffee. I would not. I brought copies and one like that, so.
I'll just say that 2017 was busy with special events that the library focused on with the the Paco Estes Centennial and the solar eclipse, so a lot of the pictures and your packet are from that. Those kinds of events besides our normal programming, we had the stars out, some of that, a lot of practice programs. The library continues to be used as more than just checking out items, more of becoming a gathering place. On the very last page, the bottom right-hand corner, there's meeting reviews now that substantially higher than previous. And something new on that very last page, about in the middle of the page, it says electronic ILL. So we across about middle. With our overdrive items that we buy, our downloadable items, we, there's a new system in place. If our patrons are not using them, other libraries in the state who are part of the consortium can borrow them and our patrons always have first use if they don't reserve over anyone else. And the state actually pays us for that a little bit, so we're getting some income from that if our patrons aren't using our overdrive materials. That's a, a nice addition to the process. Any questions?
Any questions or comments from the council? If not, then I would ask for a motion to accept a report.
Move it to the table.
We have a motion in a second. There's a discussion. Seeing none, be registered your votes. Please play the votes.
In favor, welcome back, Captain Fitzpatrick, and Mr. Singleton Schmidt. Motion.
Thank you. Item number ten, this is consideration of ordinance number 2018 dash zero four. This is a second reading. I'll do the second reading and then we have discussion.
Yep.
An ordinance to approve the flat and tile fairway wood addition to the city of Seward, Seward County, Nebraska, as here in Act Set Four, located north of Hillcrest Drive and between North Eighth Street and Augusta Drive, to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form, to provide for a time with this ordinance shall take effect. Now that concludes the second reading.
All right. As you know, we had a number of items and issues that came up at our pretty lengthy discussion on the first reading for the proposed fairway woods. Two of the main items that I can follow up with you tonight is a drainage study that we had undertaken by J E O to review the documentation and drainage information that was provided by the developers' engineering, which is Olson Associates. And so we did pass on that information. We received an initial response that is kind of in the documents you've just been handed back on their letter of January twenty-fourth. The summation of that information is that J E O identified a number of data and document information that they needed to see, that they wanted to put in the drainage report and that they also needed to basically reshore up all the information that they were looking at. That was forwarded on to Olson Associates and Jake provided that back to J E O. And then just yesterday, we got the final analysis from J E O. Kevin Cruz was the project lead on that. And the determination was basically, if you kind of look at it at the end of the letter of February fifth, he noted that the maps, figures and associated information presented in the detention study have been revised to reflect consistency and clarity. That's the drainage study proposed by Olson. It's understood that the information presented in Table Eight, which is an important table in regards to the information provided, the overall peak flows post-development represents flows produced by the site as well as flows being conveyed through from off-site areas. So that's including all the areas that were considered even off-site. The presented analysis does reflect a reduction in peak flows for two-year, ten-year and one-hundred-year events with the addition of the forward detention structure. The report clearly states that the backyards, now this gets into Augusta, the backyard of the adjacent properties will still experience significant ponding during large storm events and groundwater seepage. And the basement will still occur, but the flood flows and peak flooding elevations will be reduced. Kevin includes a note there that is recommended the additional study of this area and the infrastructure outside of the site. The site being the proposed development be performed to determine if a larger regional project is needed to address existing flooding concerns. And then it gets into the grading plan and just, it would like us to follow up with. It notes that we do not fully own the driving or the golf course and there's the proposed detention cell on that course. And so they just want to ensure that that detention cell remains on that property after, even if for some reason, who knows in the future, the golf course wasn't there anymore, that that detention remains for the benefit of the developer and everything underneath it. So we'll need to follow up with that. And then following up with the last of it, in general, the provided. And then following up with it, the last of it, in general, the provided information in case of flows from the site will be reduced. However, it should be noted that this project will not alleviate the existing flooding concern. The information provided is consistent with the requirements in the unified land development ordinance from the city of Seward dated August two thousand and three and specifically Article forty-one, paragraph eleven dot forty-one oh four, storm water management. Basically, the gist of that is, is based on their calculations and reaffirmation of the information that's provided, the additional documentation information that was provided to them after their initial review, they found that they believe that the calculations are correct, based on their review. That the claims made and the way that they'll detain water meets the qualifications of the ULPO, which is they shouldn't be putting water, additional water onto other properties. And so, again, as you see here though, and as I've spoken about in a number of our public hearings on this, we do recommend with a greater purpose of looking at what's going on in the Augusta area, that we do look at a larger scale, in the future, a larger scale drainage evaluation to look at the entire drainage basin that probably extends up past the area. And so, but ultimately, the work that's been done by Olson and the developer, they feel comfortable in the calculations and the way they've came to those determinations. So, I'll open that portion of it to any questions that anyone has at this time.
Greg, you know, and I, I did share this email with only a few city council members as a recommendation of our city attorney. That's why I called earlier, was to try and see, so I had asked Ed questions regarding these ponds and whether or not, based off their size, the amount of water, what's going to be there, whether or not fencing is going to be needed around these, or some sort of protective barrier to keep the neighborhood kids from falling into a pool and drowning and whatnot, so. Ed did have an email, I guess somebody would, wouldn't mind sharing that with the rest of the council and make sure everybody gets a copy of this to read and see exactly what his comments were on that.
So we can follow up and forward that around. I'll distribute that tomorrow for your review, so you can see it. We can follow up with that. Anything else on that, councilman? At this time, I don't know if anybody wants to come up and say anything, because I'd rather just address water issues now and then move to the other general issue, which is the driving range. Does anybody have any other questions or comments? About the water issue, is there anybody out there that would like to speak to that?
Good evening, I'm Aaron Stitt, I live at twelve fifty Augusta Drive. Yeah, I, I guess the only thing I'll say is just that you guys look into the, for the existing water issues and issues we've had on that street of either putting in bigger drainage pipe, especially to the north of my house. I know that Olson Associates stated what should be there, I don't know if they came up with the exact plan of the pipes that originally should have been in there, at least the sizing of those pipes and dimensions, if I recall right. Correct me if I'm wrong, there's, there's two, I think twenty-four inch pipes in there right now.
Mel would know.
Thirty, okay, and then he's, he stated that there should have been three, three forty, eight, is that right? Three forty-eight inch pipes in that existing, so. Only thing I recommend or hope that you guys consider is fixing that issue that, that should have been addressed a long time ago and so that future, water drainage, you just don't have those issues. And I obviously understand that the holding ponds and those types of things will help limit those, but I think that the issue should be addressed from previously and fixed so that there are no issues moving forward whatsoever. So, that's the only thing I'd like to comment on. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mary Ann Sykes, thirteen forty-two Augusta Drive. Echoing what Erin said, I also have concerns about the holding or detention cells or whatever they're called. One of them is going to be in proximity to my house and I do have three small children. Again, we don't know how deep they are, you know, but it is, it is a concern. And then also, to echo what Erin said about the pipes with those detention cells, that water eventually is going to have to drain somewhere. And it's probably going to drain through those same pipes, which the engineer from Olson already said that, you know, those aren't adequate according to their study. It's our, you know, I was at the planning commission meeting and, you know, the engineers at that point had said that the two thirty inch pipes were sufficient. That's what was there, and obviously, we can see that that's not. So, please just take into consideration, you know, if that was your house, your kids, what you would want to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who should comment on this issue? If not, go ahead, Greg.
The other item that came out, and we spent substantial discussion time on at the first reading on this item, was consideration of the use of the driving range and the long-term plan for that. We've had a number of discussions with relevant adjacent landowners all over the area, kind of looking around for different ideas. And ultimately, I did task the Gulf City superintendent with giving me some general ideas in regards to costs and numbers if we were to repurpose other lands. And so I gave them a general outline of how many acres we would need based on a whole bunch of different areas over there that we could possibly look at. And then also, what we would need to get irrigation to the driving range. T-boxes, because we do manicure and take care of those with irrigation, the rest of it's just water naturally, which we have plenty of water over there, of course. And then the other one is just setting up and seeding if we're using bare ground and things like that. And so ultimately, my biggest concern was, are we going to come back and get numbers that are looking in, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars to reform an area, or are we looking at tens of thousands of dollars? And so they did look into that and they have reported back a number for approximately a seven to fifteen acre area. Depending on, it depends on how far you have to jump with irrigation, but ultimately, we're looking at the nature of probably about a little over ten thousand dollars. Now that's just seeding and trying to take care of it. One of the other issues is if we take care of any area that we have to water great distances, we don't have water wheels anymore to kind of irrigate that long distance until we get grass established, so we'll have to take a look at that. The other thing is, is with a proposed driving range of that size now, that's substantially larger than the seven to eight acres we have now. And so the other thing is, is at some point, we want to look at getting a new picker to pick up the driving range balls, because right now, they'll be out there forever, trying to get them all picked up. And so if we do move into a larger radius and area, we're going to have to look at getting a new picker, which they think they can convert, not include it in those ten thousand dollars plus. They can probably get one that would work on this, on the machine we have for about thirty-five hundred. So it'd save us some time on that, so in the long run. So, again, that's substantially different than the numbers. Now, that's thrown together, once we have an established area to look at, those numbers may adjust slightly. But we're now looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I think it's very much viable in the long-term future of the golf course to reestablish a new one on anywhere from bare ground to, obviously, if we move into an area where we have to do some, some grading work and taking trees out or in-growth stuff, we'll, we'll take a look at that cost. I think they're looking for any grading that'd be involved unless it's really substantial, would be performed in-house. So, we'd shape it all up and maybe look for assistance from possibly the street department and then obviously, the equipment that we have in the golf course and the parks and rec department, so.
Chris?
Do you have more to say?
In regards to that, no, I mean, obviously, we're in discussions with a lot of people, we don't want to...
Yeah, so the, the piece that's missing from the numbers, obviously, this is to get a driving range up and functioning, but there'd be a monthly lease cost, yes?
Depending on who your partner is, yes. So there'd be a, a lease cost, most likely, it's going to be an annual lease cost, because most everything over there is farmland or adjacent there too. I mean, we're not going to be putting this on somebody's, tearing down somebody's house and putting it up. And so obviously, it's just farmland, and so we're probably looking at annual lease rates. I think what you'll look at in the future is we'll probably have some discussions and negotiate some prices to see what's available out there with anybody that's willing to work with us. If we can't find anybody that's willing to work with us, then we won't do it. But we've talked a number of people, so the interest is generally there. So we probably want to continue to pursue that further and then have Kelly start drafting up some potential documents. You probably, my estimation is what you should look at doing is probably a, a real estate option. So we have the option to start a lease for a term of time. And then the lease would be a term of time that would be floating over that. So say, you exercise the option in one year, and then you have a ten-year lease. Or you exercise the option five years from now in a ten-year lease. And so you'll want to look at that, and then obviously, we have the lease that's currently floating in regards to the golf course itself. You may want to consider that one as well and also look at the idea of running those together, because it would make no sense to be paying a lease on a driving range and not having a golf course anymore, or vice versa, so.
Is it?
Greg, so we've got the twentieth of this month would be when we would have the third reading and move to per. Is it practical between now and then to, A, have a new driving range space fairly securely nailed down? And, B, have the developer in some kind of agreement with what you just talked about, about ensuring that we're going to have not only a driving range, but also a golf course for extended amount of time? I guess where I'm coming from is, if we approve the, the final plat, which includes the basic forfeiture of the driving range on the twentieth, I don't know how comfortable I would be doing that if we didn't have a contingency plan in place by then. So I just, I guess since you're the one kind of doing negotiating what, what the timeline
Ultimately, there's going to need to be consideration by this body to negotiate terms. That's going to be something we'd have to do in the executive session, to negotiate terms, lease terms, everything else. But, there's the potential we could have it done, but if it's going to be the consideration of this body, we want to get that in the developer's mind that there might be interest in seeing that completed before consideration. So, we can work quickly, I'll have to work with Kelly to see what we can generate and who's interested. And then...
You could build some contingencies into your subdivision agreement to your developer agreement.
Yeah, and that's the other option.
Don't know if the developers on board with those contingencies or not.
So...
Somebody's going to have to have that conversation, because I, I agree with Sarah. You know, our conversation around the driving range and having this driving range and, and the need we feel, I think the council felt, some of the council, I don't want to put words in people's mouth, the community feels related to the driving range. The answer needs to be known before I can give a yes to this ordinance, to, to let their plat. I, I need to know that that exists.
I concur with Chris, and so before we take a vote, I think we need to have a, a strong position on driving range.
Because you're forfeiting what's currently there, so.
Unless the developer wants to split phase one, phase two, and hold off phase two until we get something in place. They want to get going on phase one. John?
Are we really forfeiting anything though? Because he still has to honor the lease that already exists, right? For the driving range? For four years?
For four years.
Four years.
But if we don't, if we don't know we're going to have something in four years, then we've got nothing.
Yeah, but at the same time, he can choose to take that piece back, is my, is my thought, which we don't have control over.
Which argues for renegotiating the entire bundle together in a longer-term situation.
I would say, I'd just direct the council at the mayor's request to be prepared then potentially for maybe another meeting in between now and the twentieth. If we can pull enough together that we want to slide something in front of you for consideration in the executive session for negotiation purposes. And then get some direction and try to have it, I mean, it's going to be quick though, that's a quick, two weeks is a quick turnaround. And then ultimately, whatever approvals we need, we're going to have to sit down and talk to Kelly, so.
John?
I, I mean, I agree with what they're saying, but we also got to take into consideration what the Waite family has done for Seward. And donated the sword for how many years ever, all the way back to the Waits of, say, Max's grandfather. I, I don't foresee, I've known Max, I've known the whole family for years. I don't foresee Max taking something like that away without having something to replace it. I talked to Max personally about it as well. And he said that, you know, that he would ensure that we had something to replace. I'm just saying, we, I don't want to see us upsetting the Waite family, saying that, you know, we're, you know, we're taking something away and he ain't going to support by giving it back. I, I don't want to cause negativity there with what this family has done for this town over generations, over generations. And I think Josh does very well, working with Max as well. And, and I think there is a way that everybody will come together and have an agreement. I just don't want no negativity going back on that family for what they have done for this town.
Any other questions or comments from the council on this item?
Well, I think, I think this can be negotiated with whoever to get a new driving range and, and negotiate with the Waite family to work this out somehow without causing any friction whatsoever.
And that is, that is our hope. We didn't have the second reading this evening. We had an ordinance earlier tonight, we don't have any ordinances left after this. I do need to have a motion to make the ordinance a part of the file record. Motion and second, be ready for your votes. Please spread the votes. There's nothing else on number ten, and we will move on. See nothing else, thank you. Item number eleven is a discussion and consideration for approval of downtown revitalization phase two program guideline.
Jonathan is here, so he'll probably chime in and be a part of this conversation. And Jonathan, if you want to come up and grab a copy of the guidelines, so that you can follow along. Pursuant to our downtown revitalization phase two grant, we're going to be turning in our program here approximately in a little over two weeks. So we wanted to give you an opportunity tonight to share your, our ideas, what we came up with, get your feedback, implement anything that we can in regards to the feedback, and then bring it back again in two weeks for final consideration and submit it to DED. And so what we have before you here, and you can, we'll kind of walk you through it, some of it's just little requirements that we need in there, but the, the, the gist of it is detailed in the grant details. But we know a statement of purpose, and then the funding mechanism obviously is DTR federally funded grants. It's going to be available to property owners, business owners and tenants within the designated DTR area that was identified in our plan previously that we've adopted. The eligible improvements are going to include rehabilitation of buildings essentially. Single-family residences are not included, so if we somehow have a single-family home that's inside the DTR, which sometimes that happens, they will not be eligible for program funds.
Does that apply to like apartments above?
Nope, just single-family residential homes. Pursuant to our initial discussion within administration and kind of talking with the mayor, we would like to appoint a downtown revitalization committee, which is going to be the initial clearinghouse for applications in the program. And so, we will be designating that to the initial discussion we had, just because of they're used to getting together, we already know who they are. We'd like to designate the DTR revol- or the downtown revitalization committee as the same as the LBA forty committee. And so, we need to discuss that tonight, but essentially, we'll go back and let them know. What we anticipate, if all things go correct and we have plenty of applicants, is they will assemble probably once, if not twice, and then they would be done. So, that's what the potential on that is. And so, what they'll do is they'll check in, they'll gather all the applications, they'll look through everything. We'll have design guidelines, so they may ask... We'll have design guidelines, so they may ask some questions about that. And then, uh, they'll follow up with anything and then make recommendations to you ultimately for funding. Our initial request is we would like to require a fifty percent match for all of the grants. The, uh, federal guidelines and the requirements of the downtown revitalization have a twenty-five percent match. But if we kick that up to a fifty percent match, that allows us to spread the dollars out further to fund more programming.
Fifty percent match from where? I asked from the standpoint of L B eight forty is gonna be the ones that are determining this. Am I getting some dollars from L B eight forty and other dollars from here to help match and make my fifty percent?
Yes, and that's a specific question that we want an answer by this body. Because as it's drafted, it could come from anywhere. But it cannot come from the city, as in, we're not gonna pay for any of this out of general fund dollars. So L B eight forty would be a potential as we have it drafted now. But it has to go through the private property owner and they contribute as a fifty percent match. If we want to designate and we want to state that as part of your project, we are not gonna allow you to, to apply for L B eight forty and fund the rest of it or a portion of it, we can designate that. But that's the kind of things that we're gonna be wanting in, you know, your, your opinions on.
You could allow L B eight forty dollars to be utilized. The question would just be, do you want that to count as a personal match? And typically I would say, no, you probably would want the person to have, whether you call it skin in the game or whatever you want to refer to it as, so that they're using their own dollars. So, and, so in that sense, we're not using our, our fund from our left hand to match our right hand. We will want them to be involved. And I probably recommend to you is, is having that requirement go both ways. So if, you know, you wouldn't want them to necessarily use the city dollars to pay back the loan either. I mean, you wanted it to be kind of bifurcated, whether you have L B eight forty dollars or even T I F, perhaps might, might be applicable, um, over here. And then you have this paragone over here. It makes sense to have the L B eight forty board be able to do both L B eight forty and this, administer this fund. Because there may be in essence gap, a need for gap financing and they could draw from the L B eight forty. But I would just be leery about let, allowing the one fund to be the match for the other fund. And that, and again, to make sure the dollars go farther, that would be my recommendation. But we just kind of want to lay it out there and let the council see what the options are, then you can decide what makes the most sense moving forward. Is that kind of what you were thinking, guys? And then this would be, I believe, one round and then we kind of see where we're at.
We would, so as you delve further in on the, the program guidelines on the second page, so we've talked about the fifty percent match, uh, coming from the property owner or the person requesting it. Because you may have a tenant or a leasing that's gonna do some improvements on a building. So then the building owners just needs to check off that they're okay with it. But the leasing is the one that's actually putting in the match. We will have, so the next level is the consideration in regards to prioritization. So that D T R gets all the applications in, what we'd estimate is we'll put together a window approximately thirty to sixty days to give, most likely sixty days to give them time to go get all their estimates. Because they're need, they're gonna have to have a general idea of what the project's gonna cost. So open up a sixty day window, applications come in, close the application window, and then now you have applications. Then it's a prioritization. You can prioritize any way you want, you could prioritize on first come, first served. If you've on the ball and you got everything done and you meet the guidelines, you're gonna get funded first. Or the one that me and Jonathan have talked about is leveraging of funds. Basically, we have a fifty fifty match, but if you're willing to put in more than fifty percent of it towards your full project cost, then we're gonna fund that one or prioritize that one higher than a fif- a straight fifty fifty, being that it's leveraging more dollars into downtown. So you might have somebody come in that wants fifty thousand, but they're gonna expend a hundred thousand rather than fifty. Versus the person that did fifty, this person's gonna get higher priority because there's a bigger investment going back into downtown.
At the end of the day, the whole purpose of this is to try and get as much reinvestment into the community. So however that happens, I guess we're not really, don't really care how, just so, just so long as it happens. And that's leveraging he's referring to is, is one of the criteria you could use to make sure that that is what happens. Because if we can have a little bit of incentive to get a, a much bigger investment, then that makes the most sense moving forward. Um, and you'll start seeing those projects. And granted, some of these projects will be very visible, you know, it could be a facade, it could be a paint, it could be things that you can drive through downtown and see. Some of these improvements won't be as visible, it could be, you know, skeletal, it could be, um, code, code issues that are being resolved. Uh, but we, we want, moving forward, we would then report back to the council, make sure that you're aware so that you, even if you don't see these things happening, that you know these things are in fact happening, there are improvements being made. That would be our commitment back to you moving forward.
Well, ultimately, the council's gonna approve them because it's federally funded. So we have to have authorization from you to extend the fund in the first place, so.
But the council, but the council will be approving based off a recommendation out of L B eight forty, so we won't have seen the thirty applicants. We're only gonna see the one that got recommended.
Yes. So you'll, they'll be your eyes and ears to fulfill your requirements that's set out in these, in this program. Um, another element that we talked about, just so you know, obviously the whole grant is for three, thirty five, or three hundred fifty thousand, but thirty-five thousand is for grant administration and eight thousand for construction management. And so what those details, we've already done our contract with Senn and Tom Bliss will be our, our grant administrator. He's gonna do all the work. This is a two tiered environmental review, so when applicants come in then and they're, meet their criteria, we'll have to do an individual environmental review, a federally required environmental review for a number of issues for every single project. And that is time and cost intensive and that's what the thirty-five thousand will go to. And then, once you award the projects, we have to do to Davis Bacon and all the other wage determination requirements, somebody has to go out on site and meet with all contractors on all projects to verify wages. And so Tom Bliss and Senn will also perform that. So that's what we're paying for with all those dollars. And when you do these sorts of two tiered projects, these are the most intensive for construction management and, uh, administration. These are about the most costly ones. It's really easy if you do a one-time project, you rebuild a road and you're done, boom, boom, it's taken care of. This is gonna be month in, month out, he's gonna be coming down here, meeting with contractors, verifying wages, doing onsite reviews and audits. So, uh, it'll be quite intensive. So that leaves over approximately three hundred seven thousand dollars to be distributed. And so Jonathan and I in our discussions came up with a minimum of a thousand dollars because just in his conversations, there are people that are just looking to put on a really nice coat of paint or maybe fix a window or two and that's all they need to do. And they don't have huge expenses. And then we have people that we know will far exceed in regards to the fifty thousand. We have a lot of interest in probably projects over a hundred thousand dollars plus. So, um, we thought that was probably the best. Limiting the fifty thousand, obviously we can probably get through at least a minimum of six projects if everybody came in and asked for the maximum. We wouldn't want somebody to steal the whole three hundred and seven thousand in one project.
Have, uh, will we, or have you planned to contact the businesses that were surveyed? Or have that, have those that have expressed interest to see if they're okay with now a fifty percent match and with these other criteria?
I think we've been discussing fifty from the start in Jonathan's communication.
It's been an expectation, I, I was just looking at my data, people that have contacted our office, we have fourteen that will be hand delivering applications to fourteen different businesses, building owners.
They get it.
Yep, they understand that if you want to stretch the fund, you put a part of it.
D T R funds, you'll sign an agreement that essentially says that the grant, because these are grant funds, is a forgivable grant and you will need, we got to pick an arbitrary number of years, so we went with five, because that's twenty percent of a year. For every year you keep the rep, whatever work you did in the state that you left it, twenty percent of your grant is forgiven. And if you keep it for all five years, then it's a full on grant. So it's forgivable. So they want to see that there's some commitment, that you don't come in and put in new windows and new awning and repaint your building. And then as soon as you get your grant money, you go in and close up the windows, take away the awning and repaint it again. They don't want to see that. They want to see that the work that was done remains for a term of years. And so the term of years we've gone with is five and we've seen that in some other programs, so we think that's sufficient. And then we're not keeping track of things for a decade, so five years we think is, is plenty of time. Obviously, we're just really gonna have to sit down and get everyone used to, if you kind of continue to read through this, a lot of this is boilerplate stuff we have to have in here, but we're gonna have to get all our contractors familiar with all the requirements, make sure they're available for Davis Bacon and for the wage, uh, calculations are gonna come out for it. So that, that's gonna be a struggle. And so we're really gonna have to educate contractors that are gonna be looking to provide bids for downtown businesses and property owners. So we're gonna work on that. There's gonna be some registrations, uh, with different federal systems that they're gonna have to do. And that's all part of that construction management administrative side. The next one is design guidelines. We need to provide some level of basically guidelines, and that's really what it is. To say, hey, if you're looking at repairing, repairing windows, maybe a boarded up windows that haven't been uncovered in thirty years, here are some guidelines you're gonna want to think about, things to do and maybe not to do in consideration of applying for these. And we do have design guidelines for the downtown, but they're from like nineteen eighty.
Nineteen eighty.
Yes, so they're not exactly up to date. And so we have gone around and tried to check in with a few different design firms. And we're probably looking in the realm of four to six thousand to have new guidelines updated. And so what we would propose is going back and checking with D E D to see if we can tuck in as part of the match that they help pay for a portion of the design guideline costs. So if you were asking for ten percent of the grant funds, you would cover ten percent of the design guideline costs. Because this is not something that we have budgeted.
So I'm just curious from a design guidelines, eight, whether it was nineteen eighty or nineteen ninety, when it's created, if it's historic in nature, what would change?
The design guidelines?
Five grand on to have somebody put new guidelines together. I mean, if you're, if the nineteen eighty design guidelines, Jonathan, were to represent the historic nature of the district.
Yes.
How does the historic nature change from nineteen eighty to the year two thousand?
The practical construction purposes from nineteen eighty are different than they are in two thousand eighteen. And so the recommendations for things like, back then we probably weren't looking at as energy efficient windows, things like that, they're gonna consider in design guidelines. Now again, if you have an ornate cornice above your window, no matter what, it's our design guidelines, because the other element of this is SHIPO is gonna, which is the State Historical Preservation Office. They're gonna review as part of that federal environmental review process, the administrative process. They're gonna review every project and their office is gonna be looking for those historical elements. And so they're going to go see, if you're replacing a boarded up window, they're gonna see a window that fits the historically accurate window face and size, dimensions of panes and everything else that we have information on. And so design guidelines, while they're not gonna be super restrictive, they're just kind of do's and don'ts. Did your building have stucco on it traditionally? No, then don't put stucco on it, that's what it's gonna say. They're not gonna be, you have to do this, if it was painted green before, you gotta paint green now. It's not gonna be to that level of depth. But it's just to give property owners. Just some things to think about as they prepare themselves. It's not gonna be as, as direct. And then buildings that have no historical nature, or maybe we have one or two that aren't historical but are in downtown, then it also gives them guidelines and says, hey, you're not historical, so, you know, you're okay with certain things that maybe aren't available to other ones. And then also we'll provide information that says, hey, if you're looking for this, go check in with the state historical office, check in with these offices, the library here in the city or whoever, we're gonna use it as a designated contact point to help assist them in saying, I don't, I don't remember what the windows look like up in mine, they're gone, they're just boarded over, I don't know what they look like. And that will also provide information to kind of guide them to a local resource to help them on their way in looking at things that they're gonna do. And so that's what will be in the design guidelines. Other than that, we just have contact information for SHIPO. We talked about kind of the process and the timeline, um, supporting documents and then things that we can do. Again, most of this has been focused on facade improvement, exterior, but we also included a commercial rehabilitation program for ours. And that, what that entails, based on our discussion with D E D and Jenny Mason, who kind of oversees our program, is that if you have anything that is out of compliance with codes, so our current building code, I think we're on the two thousand twelve codes, if you have a commercial building that's out of compliance with the codes, you're gonna be able to get anything to bring that into compliance covered by this as well. Now, we're not gonna paint your walls, we're not gonna put in new carpets and finishes and things like that, but to bring you into standards to meet code compliance, but again, looking at historical accuracy, they're gonna look at all this stuff. To do that, will also be included in the program and a part of that evaluation process is we'll have to have Ed or another designated, whether it's John or whoever's doing inspections, go out and do an inspection of the property, list out all of the elements that are not in compliance with code now, and then provide citations and then submit that as part of your application process and say, see, I had it inspected, these things are out of code compliance and I'm putting them into code compliance. And they'll want to see documentation at the, at the evaluation level on that.
That includes electrical as well as building structural design?
Yep.
AD accessibility, fire suppression, that kind of stuff.
Even as well as when I'm bringing up electric.
Absolutely, I agree.
Yep, absolutely. And so those are the elements that we'll have in there, so. As you can see, when you bundle all that together, you can eat up a lot of money really relatively quickly on a project.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Do you want to vote for approval?
No, tonight we won't vote for approval because we're gonna bring it back. I'm gonna make some changes based on the conversations.
Will any of that money be able to use on the one by cattle bank, the building there? Will that be able to, somebody will be able to use any funds with that to clean that up? Will, can you use any?
Likely not.
Likely?
Based on the information I'll be providing in my administrative report.
Okay.
But.
Maybe, maybe the sidewalk? Maybe there's damage at this point.
Yeah.
We'll get that, we'll get to that here in a second. Any other questions or comments, although I will move on. And, and actually, let's just number thirteen here, real quick, the report.
Okay. Uh, jumped all the way to the back, there's a number of items I wanted to check in with you about in my, oh, that's, that's, my administrative report. Uh, but the first one being in regards to, uh, the facility on South Fifth Street, what we commonly refer to as a known property. Uh, we did issue notice and orders to request demolition of that property based on all of the structural engineering documentation we've gotten from their own structural engineers. They've shared that with us throughout the entire process. So at this point in time, having no plan of action on file with us, we've requested it for months and months and months. Uh, we worked with Kelly and have put together, we ordered a title report, got the legal information for all interested parties and have issued notice and orders. And we've already received confirmation just today that the actual owners of the property that are listed have been served. And so the time and the clock has started on that and we've given them, I believe, thirty days, so.
Thirty days to.
Basically coming out a demo permit and a plan to get it, you know, they've, they've got a contract to hire.
Something's gotta be planned.
Well, they have to have, hire a contractor and get a demo, so.
So what happens if they don't comply with that?
At that point, then the city can abate the, abate the issue. And so we'll go out and put out for bid, we'll get bid docs and put out for a request. And we roughly know what we think it's gonna cost. And so we'll put it out and then we'll have a discussion, we'll let the property owners know that if the city bears that burden, then we'll go after them for it. So, we'll be having some conversations here pretty soon, I believe. So that's what's going on with that property.
So I'm just curious from a timeline standpoint, we, we talked thirty days, they have thirty days to say they've got a plan. They could come in and say, we got a plan, we're gonna take it down November of twenty eighteen and we'd be satisfied with that or what's, what are we looking at?
They're gonna have to have a.
A permitted action plan.
Permit, action plan and a contractor engaged by contract to tear it all down. And a scheduled date for, for taking it down.
We'd like to have it resolved at the fourth. That's where I was leading.
But after all is said and done, they still own that site.
They would, there would just be.
None there, but there would be nothing going up there unless they took some other future action.
And then we'd obviously file a lien for our costs incurred and then we'd file an action to recover those costs, which may include acquiring the property ultimately.
At some point it may become a city property. If the expenses are assumed to that level, is that fair, Kelly? The, the expenses, I mean, at some point we get beyond the value of the property.
Right.
You could come to seize property at some point, right? And then we.
Then we have a sale, and we don't want, unless you wanted it there, unless you wanted to keep it for some reason, we would probably have to sell it, or we want to sell it and have it developed some other way.
I briefed both adjacent property owners to the, exactly what I told you tonight, so they are aware so that they know what's going on as well, because they're quite concerned. It's going to have an impact, a big impact on them if it gets torn down. That's what's going on with that. Just update on the golf course and the kitchen out there. We finished all the flooring in there, we ordered all the additional fixtures that we needed, because we needed a three-basin sink for proper cleaning and things like that, that will be retained by us permanently. And so ultimately, we're going to finalize putting in those fixtures here, and then we need to move on to the point pursuant to our lease of negotiating a lease, a new lease for the use of it as a full-on kitchen, and then Part 15 is going to get started operating a full-service kitchen out of there. And so they've been a part of the process the whole way and approved everything, the setup, the design of the kitchen now, and we're really happy with how it's turned out, and we think it will, it'll last us quite a long time now that we've taken care of a lot of structural issues that are going on in there. So we'll hopefully get that rolled out very quickly, and they'll be ready in time for golf season.
What's our all-in cost?
We haven't got it totaled out yet, because we've had multiple visits by the plumbing contractors just because of timelines, but we're way under the, we had budgeted, I believe, 50,000 as a total project, cost for all of our renovations out there. We're going to be substantially below that. So we're doing all right, and so I'm pretty happy with the work that we're getting done out there. And so we'll get Part 15 in, and we'll start working on ideas for what they want to do in regards to a new lease, now that they're going to take that over as a permanent, full-time kitchen. Another big one that was brought up was the crossing for BNSF at 34, and Mel's still here. But we had BNSF in town to discuss and review pursuant to the trail project, the crossings for BNSF for the bike trail. In pursuant to that, Mel also met with them onsite and reviewed the Highway 34 crossing, and then also is it the, what's the one to the south?
Yeah, one to the south, Elm Street, that crossing will be reconstructed as well.
So they went, they went back to their committee, and I believe, I've asked for written communication, and Mel has sent that off via email for a request for written confirmation that they have funding and that they've put it in the program capital plan.
I'd go after them for safety liability. If we're bringing somebody, I mean, right in the back of the rescue squad. If you're in a wreck or if you got a spinal injury and you come across those tracks, you got to sit back in the back of the rescue squad.
I have talked with State Nebraska, and the traffic people there will not put any rough crossing signs up.
Yeah, because I, I can, you know.
Railroad kind of wanted to do it. Scott Farrell's the loadmaster who I talked to, so, yeah.
Because, you know, I mean, they should be expedited, because it isn't just sewer come across there. You've got all county rescue squads, but also Midwest and everybody else.
Yeah, we all know it, so we take so, it's the people out of town, they don't know it.
It's liability.
Yeah, so, but they have machines that come and do this work, and it's, they don't operate it in the winter time. And then we got to put in asphalt for the approach areas, so hopefully by, he had told me, March sometime, you know, when the breaks are in, and the weather kind of warms up, that they'll be starting on it. He let his committee know that this was kind of a priority crossing that wasn't bad.
So again, we have reviewed it onsite with them, and so again, trying to get the railroad to do anything without their own, with their own approval.
This ain't the first time it's dealt, the same track.
Yes.
The only last one I note is, real quickly, is just kind of a change up in us continuing to move into the digital era. We're going to start rolling out our first test implementation of online registration for Parks and Rec program. So spring soccer most likely will be available as an online registration. We pay by credit card and everything else, and we'll test out that process. That's probably going to be our highest number, because it was in the fall as well. And so we think that's a good test run with minimal amount of information to be provided and equipment and everything else. So we're going to roll that out in the spring, and then if all things work well, maybe by next fall, we'll take on all Parks and Rec registrations, will be available online as well. Any questions?
Would you like to make a motion to accept the report?
So move.
Motion in a second, you register your votes.
Okay, who made the motion, sorry. Okay, thank you. In a second, thank you. Welcome back, campus trips really similar.
Before we go back to 12, are there any future requests or counsel items, or mention of action?
The only thing I would request is hopefully we can come through on that for Greg, and for the waste management to be put on there to either accept or not accept the changes to the interlocal. And it needs to come to the council before March, so it should be on next meeting. And Greg knows what I'm
I think I forwarded it to Kelly as well. So we'll have a recommendation for you and bring it forward at the next one.
Jonathan, do you have, I announced another, do you have any events?
Oh, we had to reschedule the beginning meeting at Chicago because of the weather, so February 19. We of course encourage you all to participate. And we just wanted to say thank you to the city steward for your partnership on Lincoln Stars, and that worked very well. We got actual comments from Lincoln Stars about the appreciation that they had for the city steward's partnership, and so just wanted to pass on and say thank you for that.
Thanks, Jonathan. Will they move back to number 12, the strategy session? The city attorney to provide negotiation guidance concerning real estate interests at the Marshall Road Campus Development Area.
I'm with the city council going to closed session with the mayor, Jonathan Jank, city administrator, and the city attorney for the protection of the public interest and to discuss the city assuad rail site real estate acquisitions and to provide the city attorney with negotiating guidance for a period not to exceed 30 minutes.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please put in the votes.
Welcome back, campus trips, real estate.
The council has voted to go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and legitimate purpose of discussing the city assuad rail site real estate acquisition. To provide the city with negotiation guidance, we're now in closed session.